All right, we'll call meeting to order, roll call. Jessica Crosby.
Here.
Dale Johnson.
Here.
Tony Corby.
She will be late, she's coming, she said, here on her way.
Bruce Rappelain.
Here.
Tina Sather.
Here.
Roxanne Sosa-Dich.
Here.
Joanne Smith, here. Kevin Grover.
Present, here.
And Mitch Erickson.
Here.
All right, stand to say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Just, I think everything. Yeah, I think we're good.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, we're going to go into the election of officers and set board committees. So we'll start with the election of officers, nominations for chairperson.
I'd like to nominate.
Excuse me, is Toni there yet?
No, she's not.
You want to wait?
Okay, I think we have to wait for the election.
Well, I mean, we have on, we did last month, I mean, I don't know what the group wants. I mean, we pushed it back.
Can we, can we go to?
I believe we did wait last time we put it, we waited.
I mean, we can do it tonight again, let's.
Yeah, we can, we can move it. Um, do we want to wait on board committees?
Yeah, I would, I would push that.
Okay, we'll go to open forum. Elt Student of the Month.
I do not see Lola and Addison as hockey tonight.
Yep.
So unless Lola come, if Lola comes in, we'll pull up at, or, you know, go do her, so.
Okay. So we'll go to public open forum. Uh, first speaker we have is Kim.
All right, well, I am Kim Bel Castro, and I am in a new role. Because last June I retired, I've been a superintendent for a number of years. And so retired last June. Uh, my time in education, thirty-three years evidently was up. So now I'm doing something different. And I got approached about this interesting program that I was very intrigued by right from the beginning because I'm very aware of all the mental health needs that are in our schools. And so I'm here today to just talk about it very, very briefly. I've been working with Principal Everson and Superintendent Grover on this, on getting this to come to I Falls. And so we're planning to do it this spring when it doesn't conflict with testing or anything else that's important. And it's a no cost to the district, no cost to the families program. And that helps a lot from the beginning, but we don't have to pay for it. I did want to make sure that you understood that the program I'm going to tell you about was created by Matt Johnson, who is a former I Falls graduate and hockey player. And I think one of you know me.
I know Matt.
Couple of you know Matt.
One of his brother.
Okay, okay. And so he is the founder of this medical device. And it's called a Fraser. That's the name of that. And then there's a kitsune, which is the headset that will go with it. And so it's a medical device that the students will be doing a medical survey basically on it to check how they're doing, um, safety, health, just overall needs. And I find it very interesting and that students will get flagged if there are needs that we need to make sure they're connected to mental health providers or any other health reasons that pop up. So what's unique about this is the program has a broad background and it's connected to the health, the health community. And so we're used to having to wait a couple of months for our students to get connected to providers. And with this company, they're able to quickly get our students connected to meeting with providers at an earlier time. And so that's kind of the background of it. And it's proactive, and there's an assessment part, an intervening part, and then a refer part. And so the students would be, we take, it'll be six through twelve only. And students have to be twelve or older to participate in it. And they, for example, the sixth grade, they will be, for all of them, it'll be a fifty-minute chunk of time that they'll be in a large room and with a device in front of them and going through the process. And if the students have acute needs later in the day then, they get discreetly called down and to go through and check on them, how they're doing. And parents are notified if there are acute needs also. So that's what, that's what the program is. Again, the proactive part is really good. The checking in, especially students that sometimes don't come forward and say that they have things going on. So it's catching those quiet students that maybe are afraid to ask or say that they have anything going on. And we're able to get to all of the kids, six through twelve, in about four days to go through and assess them. And so for school leaders to bring it in, it really makes sense. It satisfies a number of state statutes that districts need to abide by also. And so it just really has some positive oversight on it with considering students' mental health and school safety overall.
Is it a new group of providers?
Is it a?
We've never had these providers before, is that correct?
You haven't here, in this district, no. And so you, in this district, I know you probably, you've got at least a full-time guidance counselor and maybe an elementary one too. And then I believe you have some community support professionals too, doing some.
Social workers.
Social workers. This would be over and above that, outside of that.
How is it funded?
And it's all funded, I have that in there. It's all funded by the medical payers. It's payers that take care of it. Schools don't take care of it, families don't take care of it.
That's great.
Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, if a person has acute needs or gets flagged, they would be seen that day whether there's a group in person or online connected with someone. If the referral process goes on, they could end up with Northland Councilman or wherever.
Sure, they could, yeah.
And at that point, you know, I'm just saying, say it was my child, I have insurance, you know, then insurance could come into play. The school's not going to be pulled in, but, so it's not in competition with, you know, Northland or, you know, any other provider, you know.
More hand in hand.
It's kind of going hand in hand, possibly catching things that people aren't seeing.
That's great. So is it something the parents have to approve?
There's a letter that will go out to parents about two weeks prior. And parents can opt out if they choose. They can opt out if they choose, but they don't have to sign off on anything. And again, the students have to be twelve to be able to participate also.
And Kim, if the students had an acute need and they were going to meet this summer in the afternoon, there'd be another phone call to the parents.
Yes, at that point.
You can kind of have two options. You can opt out of the, the actual interview process or the initial survey. And then you have another opportunity, and that's the next level.
Right.
Okay.
That's good.
So again, if it's new to our area, uh, it's actually quite new to the state. They did do some pilots in the southern Minnesota over the last year. But this is the first push out that it's a free program. And that was a part that was really intriguing to me also with the.
Are they assessed via group or via, or individually?
Individually.
So it's kind of like being sent down for an eye test or something? They just go down the hall and sit?
Right.
Well, actually, Rox, they'll go in like a class, just say twenty or twenty-five. And so like sixth grade, like, like within three class periods, first hour, second hour, and third hour, all three, just say three sections would get tested. And then in the afternoon, that's when they would work with people that were flagged, if you will. So sixth grade is all done in one day, or maybe they get six and part of seven done. Does that make sense? So they're all sitting.
But when they test, are they tested individually? Let's see, have individual time increments? Or are they tested all at the same time increments?
So they're actually sitting in a classroom, like with twenty. Each kid will have one of these, I call it an iPad, it's called a Fraser. So they'll all sit and take the test or the assessment at the same time with.
After break, but, okay. That's really a nice idea.
Yeah, it's very different, very, very different. And just a little background with the company. This is just the educational piece is just one part of the company. The other part, they've started out, they have a clinic in Austin, Minnesota, and they've got one going to be put in in Owatonna also. So they're basically kind of like a walk-up clinic where you go in and you go through and can see an online doctor just over the devices. So things are changing so much, so much. And what's different about this is usually, you know, all the years I've had in education, usually it's just education that we're dealing with things. But this is bringing a different component, bringing the healthcare and the education together. And so through this device, this also can get connected to the medical, directly to medical providers also. So again, very different.
Like an online talk therapy type thing?
Yeah, very, very cutting-edge technology. And we all know COVID has changed us all and changed our systems drastically. And this is just another one that really shows that. When I got intrigued by it, it was, you know, schools have changed. We already can do all of this. We already can do things virtually. We're ready for it, so we can be ready for this as well. And so that's the background of it.
So do you bring all these up when you do the testing? And then the school has to store them somewhere or you take them with?
Well, so I come, I come with a tech person and with some other folks. And we would be up here for about four days. Yes, all the devices would come, and then they go back with us. They actually leave a couple of them back.
That sounds wonderful.
Probably three to five back, depending on the need, depending on the need.
Okay.
So I'm working very closely with Principal Everson in setting it all up. And so we'll be, uh, it'll come, you know, we've got a pretty, pretty good plan already of how it's going to be set up. And we want to stick to the school schedule. We want to stay, you know, in their periods, and so we aren't disrupting a lot. Uh, we are also going to go to the alternative school, which I think is really a great thing too.
That's good.
And so just really making sure that we can get a check on how your students are doing. There is a staff component also for some districts, yeah, for all districts, but some districts are choosing to look at the staff part too. That would be an optional thing. So, but that's another thing if down the road, if you would be interested in that.
The same free services at the beginning too?
Yeah, yeah.
Have you found a certain percentage of students that you're catching with some, like, mental health issues?
I don't know that yet, I don't know that yet, because we're new bringing it out here. So I don't know the percentage yet. And again, the ones that really, it's the real acute or critical ones that really jump up. And you're going to get, um, your superintendent will get an aggregate report from your district. Won't have student names, but it'll be giving you a strong idea of how, how your student body is doing. And it's quite.
What kind of assessment is being used? Is it a standardized assessment? Is it something new to assess or?
Well, it is, um, this is a new thing, but it's not, um, I guess I don't know if I'd call it standardized. It's standard in the.
It's not, is it not like what, if you said the name to a group of psychologists, would they all go, oh yeah, I've had experience with that assessment?
No, it would be different than that. It would be different than that. It was, it's one that has been created by the company, but meeting the standards, meeting the health standards in the state.
Okay.
Because it says PHQ two, PHQ nine.
Mm-hmm.
Few questions for Kim. We're going to give it a try, um, the goal, and I don't know if you guys set, it's beginning to make. MCAs, the testing's done, they're back into regular class, do it. Then we'll figure out for next year. It can be done twice a year, um, so chosen. It's not something that they do, you know, obviously other than for us or something. But we'll see how the first goal and see what the take is and.
How long does it take to get data back, like to tell us, you know, how beneficial it was?
Well, I will be able to get some broad information back to, um, the principal and the superintendent readily. And then one week later, we'll get the aggregate report back.
Oh, okay. Within that report, would we be able to kind of work hand in hand with that also as far as like getting speakers in to kind of push towards those key?
Yeah, and that's the purpose of it, that there would be recommendations given them.
Perfect.
Given to the district, saying, okay, this is an area that came up that students have indicated that they would like to see more support in this area.
I love that.
So.
Thank you.
Anyway.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Good to try out.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, good to meet you all.
You too, thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah. Um, next for open forum, I'll have Gretchen.
Hello, I'm Gretchen Davis. And I'm the grandmother to a student who has lived in our home and attended International Falls School System for all of her school years. And she plans to complete her last school year during twenty-four, twenty-five, when she will turn twenty-two years old. And that will be the end of her education plan here at I Falls. I am here because I would like to ask the school board to support the education support professionals by returning to them a fair and generous contract that will attract and retain the very valuable staff that we have here in I Falls School District. Our student loves getting ready and going to school. And she knows there will be her people there who are ready to keep her on schedule, meet her needs, boosting her forward in an excellent way to meet her goals on her IEP. She is treated kindly and functions extremely well only because of this dedicated staff that we see here tonight. And a lot of them have worked with her throughout the years. I am urging the school board to build up on this valuable team working in our school system by getting this contract settled. And please remember our education support professionals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
It is my privilege and honor on behalf of the community students staff to thank the school board, February is School Board Appreciation Month. And so we don't do enough, we don't pat each other on the back enough. And so each year we do present the board with certificates. We add on the marquee a little bit, put a Facebook post out. And unfortunately, that's both what we can do to say thank you. So anyway, and I put them in order of the table here. It says Minnesota School Board Director Mission Month, February two thousand twenty-four, certificate of appreciation for your dedication to our students and public education in Minnesota. It has each of your names, my names on there, and then MSBA president and then MSBA executive director. So thank you on behalf of, like I said, students.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yours got a little like gesture.
At least that I did versus from last year earlier.
Oh, I know it.
Rox, I have yours, and I will get it to you when you get back.
Next year.
Next year. Okay. All right, we'll move back to the election of officers and board committees. So we'll start first with the election of officers. Chairperson, so call for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Joanne Smith.
Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Roxanne.
Any other nominations? All right. That was three. So now do I?
So now you do a vote, it doesn't matter which order. I mean, you have two nominations, so pick one and, I mean.
Okay. All right, we'll start with Roxanne. So all those in favor of Roxanne for chairperson?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm on the, I'm raising my hand.
So can just everyone rate, so it is four?
All right.
Oppose? Well, no, I just.
All right. So vice chair, call for nominations? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'll nominate Joanne.
I'll nominate Jess.
Can you, Joanne, I just give me a second, real.
Anybody else for nominations for vice chair? And last call for nominations for vice chair? All right. All those in favor?
Oh, yeah.
All those in favor of Jessica being vice chair, please raise your hand. And for Joanne?
Can you see her, I can't.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
All right.
We can see you.
Okay, no, I can't, I just, so.
All right, vote for three. All right, we'll start nominations, call for nominations for clerk.
Who on the, who on the vice chair, I can't see.
Joanne.
I did.
Okay.
So clerk, call for nominations?
I'll nominate Tina Sather.
Anyone else for clerk? I'll nominate Jessica. Any other nominations? All right. All those in favor, please raise your hand for Tina for clerk. And Jessica?
What?
So it's five to two, so Tina.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, we'll move to treasure.
Trend here.
Call for nominations?
For treasure? Yeah.
Any other nominations for treasure?
Who, I'm, did both of, I mean.
You can nominate.
Oh, I'll nominate her, okay.
Any other nominations for treasure?
I nominate Toni, Toni.
Okay. All right. Uh, all those voting for Bruce for treasure, signify by raising your hand.
Oh, did you say Bruce?
Bruce, yes.
Bruce, raise your hand.
Four, and for Toni, raise your hand.
I wanted Bruce.
I can't see what's funny, what's going on?
Bruce sounded, or Bruce voted for Toni.
Bruce voted for Toni, yeah, so four to two.
Sorry, I didn't vote for Bruce, but I should have. I want to be treasure.
Five to two, so Bruce got it.
I didn't think you wanted it, Bruce.
Doesn't matter.
Neither did Toni.
All right, so now we will set board committee representatives. And I guess do, do we want to continue with the committees that we are each on right now, or do we want to change those?
Could we hold that off until next month?
Technically, Kim, the board chair technically has a right, they appoint. I mean typically, well, I'm just being honest, typically you work together, you know, and, you know, are you interested in being on the high school league? Are you interested on, you know, what? The only negotiation group is, I assume we're going to say status quo for mediation on the six, we'll talk more in the session, but that's the only one.
And we can take the rec commission out of this.
Correct.
Yeah.
I vote, we just leave them the way they are.
I'm good with what I'm on.
Right, that's why I thought we could, I, I thought it'd be easier to do it next time. But yeah, if everybody's good with everything the way they are, then we might as well just do it now then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we will keep.
Status quo, is that what?
Yeah.
Everybody in the same spot.
Perfect.
That was easy.
Yeah.
Now we will do committee and administrative reports. Mitch Erickson?
Hi, hello, everybody. Um, I'm Dave from Minnesota Honor Society. We're doing a blood drive on March sixth from ten-thirty to four-thirty P.M. That's going to be in the student parking lot. If you'd like to sign up for that to donate, you can contact Mrs. Line. Spring sports week is up and running. We're planning that, the Honor Society will be taking over for the spring because Mrs. Blasky will be having her baby. So the Honor Society is taking over some of those roles that student council normally does. So thank you to Mrs. Line and the Honor Society for doing that scholarship night put on by the Honor Society as well. That was a success. Uh, we had a couple of students come to that, but it was good to get the information out and out. And there are tons of scholarships available for Falls High School. It's amazing, so thank you to everyone who has scholarships available for us.
They did a great job putting it on too.
Yeah, and they all did, it was very good. Man, someone there from the college too. So thank you to the guidance coun, yeah, guidance office and everyone who helped out with that. Student council, we are, we sold roses for Valentine's Day. We had a hundred twenty-five dollars fundraised through that. And that all went to the Make-A-Wish Foundation, which is the, every year, student councils across the state pick a foundation to give to. And this year it was the Make-A-Wish. We held elections for next year, um, so that'll be announced online, I believe. I don't know if it has already, it has been, okay, good, perfect. So that is all online, and that'll be for next year. Um, Locklin will be your new student representative, and he will be heading the president of student council as well. Cape, um, we'll be having on March eighth, the Crazy Cape Night. It was a success last year. It's for all fifth through eighth graders. It'll be at the high school here, and there'll be multiple things, open game, there'll be like a little dancing area. And I believe the pool will be open as well, that's five-thirty to seven-thirty on March eighth for all fifth through eighth graders, and it's great. All the students will be helping out with this, and they were the force behind this. They'll be the main volunteers at this event. And concessions will be sold, and there'll be a fundraiser for student council. Any questions?
Can I ask two questions?
Yeah.
And so will there be the Crazy Cape Night for the older kids as well? I know last year I think there was both, wasn't there?
I don't believe so, I think we just.
We have talks over that, we're going to try to squeeze them in.
Okay. I just know my kids like that. And then I have one more question for student council. Is it different now, like, do kids not run and get nominated? Or just if you fill out an application, do you give out?
The board positions you're talking about, or?
Well, just student council in general. Like, I, I thought it used to be like you had to run and only six got, but I see like ninth grade.
So for the general application, so when I was in about tenth grade, we had a really bad, we didn't have an annual, and it was very, it was not good. So we had, we opened it up, we made the, we lowered the standards, not just by a little. Um, so like before you used, you used to have go around, you had like twenty-five signatures and for five teachers. We got rid of the signatures, we did keep the GPA the same, that is a three-point-oh to get in student council. And then you do have to be voted in by the entire council itself. So we did make those a little bit easier to get in. So basically what happened, we had, and then this, this year we had an influx of a lot of kids. We had a lot of people joining. Um, we were right on the borderline, I believe. It's normally true for ten in each grade, that's about. It used to be six because there used to be so many people wanting to apply. Now we have a little bit of those lower numbers. So we had more people apply this year for certain grades other than others. So we did allow, I believe, eleven in for, I believe it was ten graders. So, and we normally try to stay around that ten. And we thought eleven wouldn't be that bad, and it's a ten, eleven, so we did allow everyone in. And then board physicians, how that works is they do have to fill out an application, and then they are voted on by the entire council again.
Thanks, I was just wondering when I saw a large number.
Yeah.
Like, how does that work?
Do you have, Aiden, do a prom?
I'm on the prom committee, yeah, I decided to, I'm on that.
Can you do some more advertising or light some fires on your people? Because nobody's asking anybody.
It's prom?
Yeah, it's like, I don't, I mean, you're going to have ten couples there, seriously. Like, they need to start asking.
Kids are not, can you?
Yes, no, none of them are. And you talk to some of these boys, parents talk to the kids, oh, I'll ask in a couple of months. Well, it's in a couple of months, these girls need to get dresses and.
I believe we did have a late, I believe Sam. I believe we did have a late, I believe Sam, she was a little bit later, getting hired and stuff like that, I believe, just the delay, and so we are up and running, I believe, just this past two weeks, we were out for businesses, and I believe our next meeting is planned.
But I mean, you need to get it up around the school, so these kids know that it's coming.
Yeah, that's the next thing.
Because it's been procrastination central.
It has been up since Sam got hired though, I mean, there's been prom meeting signs up all over.
Well, prom meeting, but is there signs up about like when it is and?
Yeah.
We'll do a big pitch for that, yeah.
Ask your date. Yeah.
Right, and ask someone.
Right, I mean. I'm gonna go right over the edge.
No, we'll get that, we've been, yeah, so we just, we've only had five, sixteen, I believe, so.
And it's not until next Wednesday.
Yeah, normally, normally that starts planning is normally in August.
I know, yeah.
So we are a little bit, but, so thank you to Sam for doing that.
Yeah, absolutely.
So you start prodding people.
Ask your date campaign.
Cause we've been focusing a lot on fundraising this last two weeks, so we will definitely pitch for that.
Okay, thank you. Tell you what, I'm gonna lose my.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Mitchell.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh my gosh, I need to buy me a drink.
Our enrollment is at 4:59 at Falls Elementary, we were at 4:57 last month, and then we have relay recess coming up on March 1st, we have not done that since COVID, so we're excited to bring that back, and that's just, we raised money for the American Cancer Society through different events, through penny wars, and like, kind of days for the teachers during the event, and things like that, so we're excited to bring that back. We have family literacy night, that's coming up on March 21st, we have conferences on Wednesday, February 28th, and our pre-K and kindergarten registrations have opened, so we're working on showing those. Any questions for me?
Missy, are you able to get the newsletter up on this Facebook page? That's okay, I just, I just don't know if I should reach out to like Jamie or who, okay, thank you. I just have missed it since my littles aren't with me, so. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, enrollment at high school, we're at 5:18, the same as last month, we're actually up seven from last year this time. Mid-quarter three is this Friday already, and we have our parent teacher conferences on Wednesday, March 6th, from 5:00 to 8:00, the day 6 through 12. Guidance Office has all the registration materials out now, so we're collecting those, we'll be getting those numbers put together as soon as possible, and then we'll report them back to the Board. Winter sports week, winter sports seasons are coming to an end, we actually, I talked to Tim today, we have only three home events left, so we're, we're.
Went fast.
Have a couple weeks, and hopefully with the weather, the way it is, we might actually be on the field sometime.
Yeah, I heard of a blizzard the day before.
That's all I have.
We had two kids at our school that saved a class this past month due to the weather, we were hoping to postpone it, but it's been officially canceled, because of the weather. We had a new student that came to our school within the last month, and she approached me, in a old school, they had a Dungeons and Dragons group. And she wondered if this was something that we could do at our school, and so I reached out to other community educations in our region, and I talked to Hiving, and they run the Dungeons and Dragons group, they pass nothing for the school, they do it online. So I went and talked to my tech guys, and they said they can unblock it for after school one day a week, and this girl who's very quiet, very shy, she comes in every day and sees me now to talk about this group, she's got five people that want to come to it. One of the tech guys actually, I think, is gonna step up and supervise it.
Oh, cool.
So we will do it Thursday after school till five, so I was, and when I talked to the guy at Hiving, he said it's actually a very good program, and we're catching those students that may not be involved in other activities with this school, so.
That's great.
So we are gonna start that February 29th, so I'm looking forward to getting word out this week, and party next week, and getting that started. We have babysitter and on your own classes that will be held in mid-people, and these are extremely popular classes, and I do the instruction, right now, I have dates set up to hold them once. However, I have built into my schedule that if we have enough, I will hold them twice. ECFE had their Valentine's Day party, they had 125 participants, they are holding the skating, they were supposed to be a sledding party, but that's been canceled. So we're just gonna do skating on March 4th at Rock Arena, I'd really like to just give a shout out to the ECFE Committee, they are volunteers that sit on this committee and plan these events, and they really just step up and do what they need to do, so thank you to those volunteers. Palace is running very well, we had our Valentine's Day party, and it was very well attended. April, April through June activities will be sent out shortly, we had the illness hit our Canadian program in the last month, and so I, again, I have to say to Janessa Blask and Angela Schuler, we've been able to step up, we're a small group, but we're able to get everything accomplished, and step up and cover for each other, so thank you to them. And the pool remains extremely busy, it's a very, it takes up a lot of my time, I talked about Canada has their pool shut down, we have a group of youth that come over, and it's about 20, that come over twice a week, to use our pool there and open swim, so we did extend our hours a little, or tweak our hours a little bit to accommodate them. It's just really busy, it takes up a lot of time. And then I have two swimmers certified right now, I was able to, I had two other people, two kids actually, who are swimmers on a girls' swim team that asked if they could become certified, and so I have two more coming on, so we will be able to hold group lessons like we have for a couple years, and ten are individuals, so I was very happy about that.
That's great, good.
Dab obedience class starts February 29th, and our facilities continue to be busy, we have open gym, we have, between Tim, Ringhopper and I, we've been able to keep people coming in the building. And our next advisory meeting will be March 11th at 11 o'clock on the police.
Okay, just going through a couple things, first of all, just remind me, if you've heard any, our diving pool, actually the pump went down in the diving pool, and so it's been limited use, they were able to dive in it on Saturday, Shannon's was in today, it's a pump that's down, circulating pump, again, we'll talk in general terms, we're not experts. The pump is not necessarily here to get fixed, but they're hooking the two systems together so that we can use the one pump from the pool, I think isolate, run, and keep, they, they have different chemical levels, but we're getting a fix so that if, say, the pool went down, we can do the same thing.
Good.
Tying the two systems together, that was the goal today, so that we can, you know, run that dive pool for a certain amount of time, I'm looking at Marty, cause he probably knows more than I, but that's the, so if you heard, they were able to use the dive pool this weekend for the Saturday meet, and now it's, hopefully today, again.
I noticed there was a Shannon struck here when you're at, yeah.
They were also replacing the floor in the, on the coolers, and cooed downstairs, so there was a couple things, so that's that. Mr. Ringhopper will be here in next month, March to do the winter report, we do kind of quarterly, or I should say after each season. Just getting the update, Tim and Missy talked about conferences, our wellness committee, and again, it's not all food, it's more looking at staff wellness morale, we're doing a nacho bar that night of the conferences at the elementary, the next day we're taking them out to the bus garage, and then on March 6th, we'll do it, and it's for all staff. We're just picking it on date, like, it'll be ready, I think at 2 o'clock, so when the pairs are done, secretaries, anyone can come, the only, I think it's 2 o'clock, so even the shift custodians could stop for a snack, if you will, so that's the update on that. A reminder on there, if you noticed on there, next Monday, we're gonna do our second work session, we'll do one tonight with some revenue, but I just, we do have them on there to highlight, so you keep them on your calendar. A couple things, they're leaving, you can see the consent agenda that we have, what I'm gonna call girls' hockey program, boys' hockey program, and then the figure skaters. The group that has done the Voyager Hockey is looking for someone else to take it over, I'm just gonna be honest, Marty had a conversation, they did it for two years, and they don't want to live in the arena for August again, so they're looking, so that's why that's not on there, we're not saying it's done. But if not, if someone doesn't step up for some other group, we can't, I mean, we had some other requests, but it's not enough time that I would recommend keeping the arena going, so that's, like I say, it's not done, I want community-wise, they're working to see if another group wants to, Aaron's trying to figure something out, maybe hockey will take, I, I don't know, but I just wanted you to know, that's why there's three, not whatever.
Did Aaron decide not to go forward with that original proposal that she had sent to the Board?
Well, what she had sent earlier had a bunch of time in June, but there's not near enough hours to recommend, and of course, you get into August, there becomes an issue of how much she can be enrolled, now she can organize something, you know, and so, and again, I have no idea what's gonna come, I don't want to put, I mean, there's talk, maybe they would try doing the, that camp more in June, I don't know, so I'm just telling you, you're probably gonna see something, this isn't the end all be all, but I'm gonna say that the normal four weeks or historical four weeks is what's coming to be right now, so that's that.
Kevin?
Yep, go ahead, Rox.
Did Marty say, was it more the people setting it up that didn't want to do it, or was it not enough enrollment, or?
No, I think it's, I think it's finding some other people to help coordinate, run it.
Never there all the time.
Correct, and, and, and I give them credit, and I think it's been a good deal for, I'm gonna say our skaters, but on the other hand, they're looking for someone, I'm not saying they're not interested in helping or whatever, but they're looking to pass the torch.
Yeah, we're given there, morning till night.
So that's what we're waiting for, is that answer your question, Rox?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, had some comments on BACAS, just, I just wanna, you know, get everyone on the same page, there've been a, been some questions on when our junior high has events over there, and just so the boards are aware, it's been that way for quite some time, it's just not a new thing, where rec, they did the same thing, now I agree, it's not common to go to a junior high event, I'm just gonna say, say, it's Deer River. Typically, it's in the school, you know, they have several gyms or whatever, I would agree, it would be kind of, that's my, my own opinion, and we'll see where we can get, but I want the Board, at least where we're coming from, it'd be kind of like us allowing figure skating to use the arena or renting it, and then us charging admission, it doesn't sit right, but on the flip side, I just want, they're probably gonna want us to pay more than for rental, because they have to clean the, you know, the auditorium and things like that, so we're gonna have conversation, it has been brought up with, with them before. I did a little bit of, you know, is this the first time, I even, I'll be honest, well, it doesn't matter who had a conversation with people that have had several kids going through the program years ago.
So historically, we didn't pay for BACAS, or?
Well, it just depends, for, for some time, the Rec Commission didn't pay, then at a certain point, I think we're in the city maybe, don't quote him, just pulled some funds back, then I think rec had to start renting a little bit. But they charged admission for those events for, not practices, you know, that's a tight deal, but when there's games, they have charge, and where we're seeing the problem now, is people pay there, and then they come over here for the varsity and go, I already paid, well, you know, that's not our deal, so we're, so there is an issue, but I just, I'm just throwing it out, anyone has contacts, wanna have conversations with their people, we're gonna try, but my guess is they probably made
They made a lot.
Three, four thousand dollars in the year, well, think about it, just say 25 people go to a, 30 people go to a seventh, eighth grade game.
They said it's five dollars per person, five years and older, like one family has already paid two hundred dollars.
Five bucks. Yep. You know, and so, and maybe 40 people, you know, and you do 10 boys events, 10 girls, or something like that, it adds up pretty quick, so that's where we're at, we'll have conversation, we'll get back to you, and the time is right to redo that. Another question that came up is how much information, and again, there was an issue earlier, and I'm not gonna talk about the issue, but how much information is the Board open to as far as student data, it's a question of community, or even staff data, okay, if, if we were gonna discipline a person, okay, when it came to the Board, you're open to all that information, but, you know, like an email came out, and people want, I want all the information on what took place. There's a problem there, and I just, I, I'm, I'm open to talk with people individually, but you gotta realize that's where, unfortunately, when you're not at this table, it's kind of like you're an individual person, now, if it's coming to you, like we had something on the agenda, we can, we can roll out the personnel file, or whatever it all would be on the situation, so feel free to call, but it's not something I'm gonna put a lot of info in, you know, an individual email to you or something, because there's a gray line, and I would say principals, AD, other people would do the same thing, they'll have conversation, a lot of times in general terms, this is what we would do in a situation, you have to lead into it a little bit, does that make sense?
Kevin?
Makes complete sense.
Yeah, Kevin, is, is the term HIPAA, or is it a different term for labor law?
Well, there is some data privacy, I mean, that's part of it, it depends, I mean, like you say, if there's a discipline issue, like with a staff member, when it becomes a disciplinary issue and it's acted on, then it becomes info, if, you know, I'm just gonna use, well, just say I had a conversation with someone and kind of reprimanded verbally today, it's technically not public info.
Right.
You know, so.
Or should it be?
Well, no, I'm just, you know.
Yeah, Rox, HIPAA is specific to medical.
But it is data privacy.
No, it's, it's, I don't think it, it's just that.
Oh, it is, we work every day.
I, I'm gonna have to investigate more, but I, I guess I'm wondering for the question for Kevin, is it, who made those rules that you just talked about now, is it considered under the umbrella of HIPAA, or under the umbrella of labor law, or under the umbrella of school policy, what is it?
I'm gonna say some of all the above probably, I mean, like data privacy on student, like, I mean, technically, even like a teacher, a teacher technically doesn't have a right to student data unless the student is in their class and pertains to their class. Now, in the world we live in, with electronic system, they probably look at things, but realistically, they're not to go look at things that doesn't pertain to the student in their class, and they're, and you know, same with like a coach, a coach would be entitled to, you know, certain things to look at, but certain things are not entitled, you know, so I just wanted to throw that out there. If there are questions, by all means, please reach out, I'd rather have a conversation or that type thing, and I think the last thing, I, I just, I want to inform the Board, I have put my name out for a couple job interviews, applications, I don't have anything at this point, and I don't know if I would actually accept them or not, I was encouraged, but if I do get an interview, it becomes public info, and so I didn't want anyone, I have no idea if I will or won't, and wasn't happy to talk offline, but I wanted to get from that, if you do hear something, there could be some future. That's all I have unless there's questions.
All right, we'll move to the consent agenda, is I have a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
I can just make a couple, couple comments, just so you're aware, jail catering number four is on, and Mr. Sebel, she's entitled to it as, as part of the contract, we do this, right now it's questionable, needs to be done now, it's, in the contract, it says in the year of retirement, so we're in the calendar year, and statute, I think it says in the school year, so it'll come now, so I mean, it goes forward, also, once we start the new fiscal year for TRA, she has to put it in notice, so it's not that it's, it's.
But she's not working now?
She's not working, and actually, the incentive that's in contract, it goes by the year she went out, she doesn't get extra like years of service and the salary went out, so it's calculated on, she's been out a few, two years or whatever, it goes on that date, not as hard for her to be even understanding, so that's good.
All right. All those in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, we'll move to action items, under improving systems and structures to create a culture where all are welcome and supported, resolution acceptance of gifts and donations. So whereas school board policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district, whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district, whereas Minnesota statute 465.03 states the school board may, may accept a gift, grant, or devise of real personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of International Falls Public Schools, ISD 361, accepts the appreciation, with appreciation, the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district, do I have a motion? with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
All right.
Who's the team names?
Jess and me.
Tony, sorry.
Um, Tony.
The following voted, um, oh, sorry. Yep, first we have Wesley and Carolyn Peterson, FHS speaker, a hundred dollars. True insure, uh, ECFE Valentine Dance donation, seventy-five dollars. Betty Hendrickson Industrial Arts donation in memory of Wade Whitbeck, a hundred dollars. Falls Education Foundation, uh, FES Educational Classroom Supplies, six thousand one hundred sixty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. FHS Educational Classroom Supplies, two thousand one hundred fifty-four and seven cents. And Athletic Supplies, nine thousand five hundred and eight eighty-six cents. Prom donations, ManCor Trucking, a hundred dollars. Up North Electric, a hundred dollars. Borderland Insurance Agents, fifty dollars. True Star Federal Credit Union, two hundred. Wagner Construction, a hundred and fifty. Family Chiropractic Center, fifty. Brent's Garbage Service, two hundred. Wright Interiors, a hundred. Green Larson Mortuary, twenty-five. Shorewood Dental, a hundred. Border Bank, a hundred. Rainy Lake Medical Center, a hundred and fifty. Remmer Bank, two hundred and fifty. Showbooms Nursery Gift Bank, Chocolate Moose Winter Hat. Northern Lumber Air Fryer Dunkin' Gift Basket. KGHS KSCM Four Passes to Nickelodeon Universe Moose Mountain Mini Golf. Whereupon the resolution, uh, oh, whoops, sorry. So.
Just before you take a vote, obviously, thank you to all the donors. Um, I did wanna mention the Fallside Foundation. This is the, this, what they call the spring grant. They do another one where they'll ask for, um, uh, applications like in May for, it's technically for the fall, start of the school year, or again, classroom as well as athletic. I think this brings their donation for the, what they call school year, thirty-six or thirty-eight hours.
Wow, amazing.
Yeah, everyone, you know, a donation is a donation.
That's amazing.
It is amazing.
Very nice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, second, um, can I get a motion to approve the hire of Dale Johnson as junior high boys track coach for the twenty-three, twenty-four season, and Dale is gonna abstain from voting?
I'll make the motion.
This is Rox, I'll make the motion.
Oh, I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And one abstain. All right. Um, number two, maintain our facilities to be welcoming, safe, and efficient for the youth by students and the community. Do I have a motion to approve staying with Northland Learning Center Special Education Co-op and give the superintendent the authority to continue the discussion and selection of the best building option with the NLC co-op? Board, uh, to allow, under new legislation, to levy up to sixty-five dollars per pupil unit for co-op facility projects?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Just so the groups were, I printed a new, this is very similar to last month, what we did. It has the new updated tax and, um, the, the, the data, if you will, towards the back. Um, for the most part, and this is the one I'm going to, in the National Falls, it's our specific tax impact. Our tax impact is about half of that, using that sixty-five dollars that is allocated because of, you can't access much of the services. Um, for the most part, I'll be honest, I think the group is leaning towards a new facility. I needed to give them talk last time, um, but it's gonna be a process, so, um, and I'm in favor, I think it's in our best interest. We haven't paid, like I talked about, for facilities as long as we belong, um, it does cost a little bit, a very, you probably won't notice, so to speak, on that one, 'cause things go up and down enough, um, even as we go forward with our discussion. You know, I mean, I'm just looking, you know, four to six bucks for our whole system there, you know, it's possible, I'm assuming that, you know, flush weights each year, full levy, so anyways, um, any questions? Like I say, otherwise, there's a couple slides that are updated, but, um, let's see where it goes. If some of the districts don't come on board, it'll be a different conversation. So just because we approve just doesn't mean it's going forward, 'cause if, you know, six out of nine hit or something, we're back to drawing forward. Any questions?
Uh, all those in favor of staying with the Northland Learning Center Special Education Co-op?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right. Second, do I have a motion to approve moving forward with the facility bond referendum on August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and direct the superintendent to work with Nexus to submit needed paperwork to meet statutory requirements?
I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
And I think everyone, I think I, I sent an individually mailed all of you that, um, again, I'm learning, but, um, so is Rob, I'm, it's part of the process. The presidential is the only primary that is on March fifth. Um, everything else, whether it's a federal Senate seat, federal whatever, is on that date. But the president is the one that was kind of thrown, sometimes it can land, I guess, but this time it is not. So, um, with that, it's his recommendation, data says to brighten our best interest to go in August. Keeping that in mind, some of the conversations we had, it is gonna take all of us to have conversations, because, you know, um, the crowds are, we need everyone. Well, a good chunk of people that aren't in here, you know, meaning teachers, meaning parents, meaning, even principals of myself are out, you know, different times. And so, again, I'm behind it and confident that it's the right, the goal, and let's do it, do it once, and hopefully be successful.
Kevin, is there, uh, I've forgotten our plan, if we had a more specific one. Is there, um, a, a plan of us all getting together, uh, uh, as a board to discuss, uh, more details so that when we are approached by the community, or if we are given duties to assist with the, shall we call it campaigning or whatever of this? Is there, is there anything we can do to improve our skills in trying to assist the community to understand this?
So, once we have a date tonight, Rob has already been working on a timeline, both kinda, you know, it spreads it out if it's in November, it shrinks it up. Um, is working on, and, and again, it's gonna take a little bit of time. I don't wanna say it's ready in a week, but, you know, some of the one-page flyer, as well as maybe a ten, ten, or a ten-slide PowerPoint or something like that, that can be used if we go out. And so, once, as quick as we can get some of that, um, we're gonna start the plan going as far as trying to rule things out to the newspaper to, you know, start meeting with groups, you know, and go through the process, like I say, of trying to, um, PR it. Start meeting with our staff, because even staff, you know, is part of, but they're in a lot of the same places everyone else is not. Probably even where this is gonna go forward until we put information out.
So then, 'cause Dale and Joanna and I were on the committee to reach out to businesses, can we have a meeting with Rob so we can kinda section out what we want in separate presentations to go to businesses?
And, and I think a couple folders, what I, at least was some of our talk, is we have a few work sessions coming up. And I don't know if you wanna team the same nights, you know, that he could be here either before.
Oh, yeah.
What I'm just saying is, is, you know, as he gets stuff ready, but yeah, then it's gonna be, how do we, is divide and conquer the right word? Um, and, and like, say, um, several people have sent, I've started a list of groups.
Yeah, you had a good one.
You know, um, that, you know, a lot of, some, a lot were doubled, you, you know, this and that. But it is gonna be some, you know, that I can go to, or people that have connections can go to, um, and, and we're gonna figure that out. I mean, obviously, you can have conversations with family and friends, you know, that's very important. You know, the, um, I was talking to one person last week, and I forget what they called it, like, it wasn't a rule of seven or something, but if every employee could, you know, seven or nine or, I don't remember what the number was, think of what caused their vote status. Because there's a hundred and sixty staff, a hundred and eighty, depending on how you, you know, count everyone, if they can sell it to even five people.
Six degrees of Kevin Bacon or something.
Some, I don't know, yeah. So, anyway, so, I would say yes, you know, but.
Okay, 'cause we need to do that, 'cause like, I literally wanna go through that book and say, here's the business, we wanna go for, for this, and then break that out into a presentation so that we can go there and talk to those businesses.
And, and, and there is some, like you say, conversation, he had something with Vikings Group, we had a conversation. I don't know how much mon- you, you know, and again, until you actually have some of those conversations.
Well, and he might, uh, he interpreted it a different way I, than I did. She told me there was money. They don't give grants, per se, or they don't give, um.
We have, I think it's the twenty-nine, don't quit, uh, uh, virtual meeting with this lady, and so we'll see where it goes. You know, like you say, I, I know, not more than, you know, Rob asked him for when all the dates work, you, you know, and, um, they did ask for the A.D. to be involved, 'cause they wanna build some things too.
Sure.
You know, um, so, anyway, yeah, so that's, that's where we're at.
All right. Um, all those in favor of moving forward with the facility bond referendum on August thirteenth?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? All right, passes, go on with August thirteenth. All right, um, budget discussions.
I was gonna say, I said to Kevin when I sat down, didn't we just do this?
It feels like. Okay, I think Kevin gave you the, um, handout. Um, we don't have a lot, so we're just gonna do, keep it brief, um, after we're anticipating, we'll do it later. Um, first, second page, I think, is just basically, um, the standard for A.D.M., because that's where the revenue is generated from. Um, first slide, basically, what we have is, um, um, fiscal year twenty-seventeen to twenty-eighteen. Um, we've got your actual data, uh, and this is adjusted A.D.M. And then, um, I've got basically, at the very bottom, you can see where we've got our estimates for fiscal twenty-four, which has been updated as of today, or as of February first, excuse me. And then pushing those estimates through to twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, so we can get an idea of what the next three years look like. Um, one most significant note for fiscal twenty-four, um, that has been kind of, is a good thing. Um, overall, from your ending actual twenty-three to twenty-four, you are up in moment-wise twelve. Um, which is, I would say, yeah, if one, one specific reason, we're gonna say it's from the disposure and those students coming back in. There's a lot of shifts every year. However, you look up from twenty-seventeen to twenty-twenty-three, overall, in total, your cumulative total, you have lost a hundred and seventy-six students. A hundred, yeah, a hundred and seventy-six, seventy-six students. Um, so you can see the significance of the drops. The forecast out is really for twenty-five, um, going down ten, and then twenty-six, seven. And twenty-seven, the projection is showing another big decrease, down twenty, down twenty-one. And the reason for that is kind of how, if the slides are colored, what we're really doing is from kindergarten, sixty-eight, and twenty-twenty-four, we're saying that group carries forward all the way down to twenty-seven, and grade three S still sixty-eight. So we're assuming the grade progression is gonna be a hundred percent for all intents purposes, because overall, on average, it is. It shifts a lot in between each grade, but as the grades move forward, those larger grades shift out. So, as you can kinda see in twenty-eighteen, we had twelfth grade of a hundred. We're down to in twenty-twenty-seven, twelfth grade at eighty-one. So as those incoming classes, like if you look on the opposite end of the spectrum, as the big classes go out and the smaller come in, it is really kind of where you've got a nice little, um, hole for a couple years. We're gonna be flat for the most, for most intents purpose, for all intents purposes. But then it'll catch up when those larger classes and the high schools drop off. Um, things can change, you know, some things that can change that are obviously, well, what's coming along. Kindergarten is the hardest project. Um, Missy will keep me informed of changes in enrollments as she has them, but kindergarten is really a black hole. So we just basically go with our gut average and go, for historical purposes, we always drop a couple just to have that variation and that variable. Um, and I didn't put it together here on this slide, but, um, I will add it, um, I'll try to bring to you the next time, um, like some of the costs of like our P.S.E.O.s. So we have a lot of enrollment loss, but I, I kind of like talked about, um, to bring to you what the cost of your P.S.E.O., how much you're losing to P.S.E.O. every year, um, because that, um, I'm hearing level that that is increasing again next year. And so the more kids out to P.S.E.O., I think this year, I'd estimate you'll lose two hundred and fifty-nine. So there's a, you know, I just want that out there, because as your enrollment gets smaller and all the other pressures, that is a league that we don't see. Whereas in enrollment, you'll see the enrollment out, you'll see the kids, so you'll see it, it's visible. Whereas the P.S.E.O. and the cost of tuition, the cost that we don't see is not really necessarily part of it. Um, so we'll keep that in front of us, we'll run the numbers again, go out to see if we've got any projections. Um, and when we can get better ones, we'll update them later to you.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yep.
Can you remember where A.L.C. falls in here? These, they're not included, are they?
They are, they are. So the A.L.C. is one of the harder ones to project, um, because they can be at the A.L.C., they can be here, they can be online, and they go to, they come and go a lot.
Okay.
Um, so that one is really where the numbers will fluctuate, but they are in these numbers.
Okay.
And so just, so the groups were, you know, just say we have twenty kids over there, that F.T.E. is more of a seat time. It's not like here, if a kid misses one day a week, we get one point over. Well, over there, it's actually, you have to be there to generate times.
I suppose.
So there's kids, and, and Tim was saying, this year, um, it might even been something last year, have more kids that are attending consistently and being there. So, um, we were off a little bit, which often a good way.
In a good way, yeah.
Same thing here, we're making a little, I think, a little higher prediction because of, it seems like it's going that way again. So, you know, out of the twenty, we might actually have fourteen empty, you know, which would be great.
Do you think that that part of moving into a different building is helping, or?
I don't know, I, I don't know the answer to that. Is there coming more because of that?
It seems like a good atmosphere.
It does seem like a good atmosphere if you've been over there.
Yeah.
It's a really nice setup, you've got two rooms, kinda separate rooms, and then one out front.
Yeah.
So, it is a nice setting over there.
So anyway, that is, and again, it's not, but when you're off by five kids, I mean, five kids is something, you know, and you met fifty thousand or more. You know, and so it's, it is a tough one to, now next year, we could, you know, knock on wood, have some pullback, you know?
The other thing, and it doesn't show it on here, um, that I did know, 'cause I had Michelle look into it for me, um, you gained a significant amount of residents in. Now, we don't get a lot of residents in, normally it's like ten, but we're actually, I think, I counted twenty-five this year, so.
What does that mean, residents in?
Residents, or non-residents, excuse me, because I'm not using terminology correctly. We've gained, um, residents in, meaning kids outside of.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So, for me, that was a significant shift. In my eighteen years of doing it, it's always been ten, twelve, eight, and it went up to twenty-five this year, 'cause I had her double check, and I'm like, this just doesn't seem like.
Well, and a few is also, we, and, and, I mean, quite a few of the Indus people are our own residents too, that we got. But there's also a few from Little Park and other areas that could come in. So, um, again, we're gonna see revenue, and, and the tough piece is without the expenses, hard to put a lot together, but, um.
We, we picked up a few students from Little Park at the A.L.C., because we have an A.L.C., so that.
Wow, that's good to know.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, a little harder, um, regardless, so let's talk about, let's go to the revenue budget change. Um, this is just kind of an overall top, hot, gloss highlight of the significance. So what I typically like to do is take what were the main significant changes, so this isn't meant to, so for twenty-four, um, my overall revenue budget is up a little over a million dollars. Underneath there, I'm basically just giving you the most significant pieces of that. I'm not nickel, I mean, every five-dollar change, ten-dollar change. Um, so when we talk about those changes though, what I need to kinda make sure we understand is that million isn't the bottom-line million, okay? So there, some of it is carryover, some of it is just one time, um, so I kinda wanna go over so you understand what really is significant increase versus what that whole million represents, and we just did, we gave a million dollars. Um, so your general education revenue directly is up two hundred and forty-nine thousand, call it two hundred and fifty thousand. That really is, is a direct result of that ten, twelve increase that we've got on the books.
And that also has the increase in there, which again, we forecast, you know, we budgeted a good chunk of that. So I mean, you know, when you say, I just look at the general, I, up a hundred and fifty thousand, great. Well, a good chunk of it was budgeted as far as the four percent increase, you know?
Which is good.
Which is good, but I'm just saying it's not truly a plus. Same thing with, like you say, the kids in.
It's not extra money.
Yes, it's not extra money. Um, so, global-based general education, which is where the majority of the money comes from, is up a hundred and. Um, so, global base general education, which is where the majority of the money comes from, is up on a three one thousand of that two hundred and fifty. Um, then when we start pulling out the general education aid, what we find is our basic skills. So compensatory, the state change, how that, how that is calculated, either the brain reduced lunch meals. Um, and so we've got a full harmless language until the legislature needs this year to decide how we're gonna be funded. Because of that, and then also, they've, um, changed that the kids on Medicaid at the state qualify, so we get to count those kids out. We didn't get to count before.
Oh.
So we're getting extra money for those kids that we did. So those changes alone, um, increased the basic school revenue this year by fifty two thousand.
Wow.
So that's where the rest of it goes. Now, my caveat note there is, we take, basic skills is restricted, so it can only be used for certain things. We take a hundred and seventy four thousand of that, and we give it to Fund Four to fund preschool. So we're taking a hundred and seventy four out of our gen, uh, our basic skills off of gen, and we're putting it down into preschool, right? Um, and I keep that note there, so we don't forget, there is, we're looking at historical, our basic skills is looking really like in grade year year. Um, then the other, um, significant change is for special education cross subsidy. Now, the number I've got here is three hundred and fifty seven thousand, this is an extremely soft volatile number, and I caveat it because special education, um, is still being determined for twenty three. So we're in twenty four, I will not know until the end of March what special ed actually generated for last year. So if my projections and my audit are off significantly, we're gonna take a hit or gain this year, but it also means I can't calculate what twenty four is. Because I, I, they changed the formula, so cross subsidy is gonna be more, but I cannot mimic the formula. So I have really no gauge to go in, I have over under, and cross subsidy, they funded it more, so we're gonna need more based on the state's templated things, they're saying we're gonna get three hundred and fifty seven, but the state's numbers are based on numbers that I put in the system probably two years ago. Okay, so it could be more, and it could be less, because it's also gonna depend on how much we're putting into special ed. And then off at the top, they will take away the tuition that we're owed to other districts. So if I'm eating a million, and we've got more sped kids attending other districts, they could take three hundred off the top. And I don't know that, and I won't know that until a year later. Those numbers don't, they, it's not, it just, they only run it four times. So this will be, and that's why it takes kind of so long. So I hate to increase the revenue by that much, is kind of what I'm saying, because it's not the number I'm comfortable with.
But it is a significant number, that's a legislative change from last session, increase the cross subsidy, and so.
We, and so the, you know, the kicker is, we won't know what that number is until spring or July.
Wow.
We, I mean, so when the auditors come this spring, or in the fall, and when we do our workup, we're gonna do our best guess estimate. We're gonna run the reports, use what we get, but we really will not know until the state plans in March of twenty five, the reports, the files. Because every is the past report, everything else is pre-set, we're gonna shake that.
And because it's new legislation, comparing it to before is like apples to oranges.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, whereas like last year, I can work out, okay, twenty two.
Yeah.
Was a million, and our expenses have gone up a little, and yeah, I'm gonna get a million.
Right.
Whereas this year, yeah, so I really am not, um, but to not put it in there is not correct either.
Right.
Um, then as far as the other additional increases, um, we had additional carryover from COVID S R funds, um, two hundred and ninety two thousand. That is just strictly one time, it's gonna be spent, but we did not spend that last year, so we're bringing that forward. We, a lot, um, we have a lot of title carryover, more than what we normally would, that was seventy five thousand. Um, that is simply because we've had so much COVID money, we've just not really been able to spend it as much as we would like to. Um, but I anticipate going into twenty five, that that number will come down a little bit. Um, some new fundings and some footlofts, that are gonna impact the expense side for twenty five and twenty four that are not built in yet. Um, unemployment, so as you're all aware, we get, um, folks get unemployment in summer, the state's given a three-year, one-time funding. Um, right now, it looks like we're gonna get forty six thousand of that, but I will have to add the expense to the expense side, so it's not a in, or a positive, it's a lot, it's a negative, it's a zero. Um, then we have new, new funding, library aid, um, this one will help us, it's thirty nine thousand, call it forty thousand. Um, we will use that, we will be able to use that for the most part to offset some of our library costs, but we will have to add some costs. But for the most part, we should be able to use that revenue for Fund One, but it is, um, a restricted fund balance. Um, two other fundings that we are not going to be able to use, but I have to put them in the revenue budget, because we're gonna have to pay them back, and that's for student support aid. We don't have anything that meets the criteria, and the only way you can really spend it is you have to literally add new positions, and, um, those new positions, that revenue doesn't come close to the money, so that's a different stuff.
Positions that are covered in that, and and that's one of several groups' plea to the legislature is to widen that or make some adjustments, if you will. It's like a licensed counselor, a psychologist, I forget the five, I mean, and.
And you can't think current status, it has to be an ad.
Correct, it has to be an ad, and so, you know, it'd be higher than other, a social worker.
Social, there are social workers, right.
You know, well, you know, for forty thousand.
Yeah.
We're not gonna get very far with, you know, paying benefits, so, um, and the co-op gets the same thing, but it comes through us, you can't use both of them for us, so.
So then what happens? They give that money, but if we don't?
We'll have an expense, and it'll go back to the state.
Got it, okay, okay.
It comes in, because they don't know until we submit our U F R's up and down, if we spent it or not. So that, when we close out the year, we'll book it in as looking at that.
Gotcha.
So it doesn't impact it, but I have to put it, because it's seventy some thousand, I didn't want to knock it.
Sure, it's still a line item.
Still a line, yeah. Um, literacy aid, now this is another one of those, this is what the, the state will do from time to time, is we would, we used to get liter, we do get literacy delivered for that. Literacy incentive aid is unrestricted as of last, as of twenty three. So that means we've gotten forty two thousand or so every year that Missy has been able to use for briefing software and instructional software just over here. The state has now changed and mandated how we can now use it, so they've changed it, it is now restricted. So basically, we've taken forty two thousand out of your revenue fund that we could use over here, and now it can only be used for like three things. Um, we are gonna have to carry it forward into twenty five, because we don't have any expenses that qualify for it. Kevin and Missy are both working on how we're gonna spend it, because again, it's like the student supported, the amount we're getting does not cover even close to the cost of what it's gonna cost us to spend. But if you don't spend it, it's just gonna sit in your restricted, and there's nothing even you owe it. So that is, um, so again, when we say the million, if you start back, you know, a million, really, your gen ed, two hundred and fifty thousand, and your sped, three hundred and fifty thousand are true bottom line gain. The rest is, well, I know literary, library aid, but the rest is really, uh, spoken for.
Yeah, accounted for, yeah.
Counting for, not really gonna help you long term.
Right, it's in and out.
In and out. Um, on your draft, or draft for twenty five, um, I had manual calculate everything, because the state guidance reports are not out there, so we're gonna caveat that with this, this is my manual calc, uh, my formulas, um, and a lot of assumptions in, but revenue is down, um, one point three million in twenty five. So any gain that you just made this year, just go away next year.
Is that because of the S R stuff?
Yeah, most of it's from the S R.
Okay.
So your gen ed, um, thanks again to your increase this year, that increase in the, um, you know, student count's gonna kind of hold you harmless for next year on, on end because of the formal increase. Gonna hold you harmless for the most part. Um, your levy is up two hundred and fifty eight thousand. That, don't take that as, oh, the levy's up two hundred and fifty eight thousand, there's a lot of levy age shift going on in there, so while you may be getting in in levy, you're not getting in in aid. So it's not necessarily a net, but on paper, if I show you the levy, your levy's up two hundred and fifty seven thousand. Um, your gen ed overall, due to A D M drop, is down eighteen thousand, call it eighteen thousand. Um, when you pull that eighteen thousand apart, you're losing a hundred thousand in basics, basic gen ed aid, down a hundred thousand. Um, and then basic skills again, basic skills is based on what we recorded in fall of twenty four to twenty five. Um, and because again, we've got more kids on the Medicaid, and we're catching more kids, we're gonna get another seventy nine thousand, okay? Um, but again, that's restricted, so there's gonna be, like, where that bubble goes, we're working, um, Kevin and I are working with Missy, and on some options, what we can spend that on. Um, but it might not be a direct offset to the expense, we might have to add, to spend it, okay? Um, S R, you're down a million four. Um, title, because of carryover, we're, um, dropping it down fifteen thousand. And your miscellaneous revenue, um, I dropped forty three thousand, I don't look miscellaneous revenue until I know it. So we've got a lot of one-time payments coming in this year that are not recurring, so I keep those obstacles. So overall, at twenty five, we're looking at it being down about a million three.
But again, ju- just so before, like, until we get expense and this and that, I mean, we're, we're in a very similar spot. I'm just gonna say, when we were talking last year, we have an S R fall off, but many districts are in the same place. That being said, the, you know, Indus kids are gonna help some things, and the, the, um, uh, cross subsidy is gonna help some things. But we're still gonna, as expense comes in, have, have a hole to talk about, but the hole's not as big hopefully as we talked about a year ago, which is a good one, but it's not gone.
There's still a hole.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Um, so hopefully, this is just kind of very high level, um, hopefully, wow, I should say, hopefully by Monday, we'll have it dialed in better. Um, right now, what we've basically done, um, I've basically done is I've, um, rebuilt the personnel budgets based on what we know with positions, um, wages and everything, um, I just didn't get through all of the groups yet. So with the adjustments I've made, um, for personnel, um, we're basically at fourteen million, one fifty six. Um, on the expense side, um, of that, in terms of COVID, um, we've got eleven point seven F T E being supported by COVID physicians right now, or by COVID funding. Um, and we have a lot of, a million, a little one million doll, one million dollars. Um, and then we have two temporary, oh, I'm sorry, I switched over to this one.
That's okay.
Um, and then we have the, um, other positions we added for COVID funding that are coming to an end, that are, uh, funding home interventionists and those summer school programs. Um, those as well were funded by that COVID money, so those positions will be coming, um, and that summer program, all of that will be ended. Um, what we are kind of working on, giving our hands around, is, as you know, the state passed Earn Sticking Safe Time. I do, I'm working on how we're going to model what that is going to cost us. Um, because it's the lead time that I've modeled it from yet now, that we've never had to pay out, and it's really hard to know how to budget for something that has not come to pass. Um, so that increase is gonna be.
I thought we, hang on a second, I thought we met the rule for.
Certain positions, like teachers, there's not a new increase other than you could have a little more usage.
Right, right, because the.
You know, I got to name someone I put on as a significant, you know, I could use sick time to go help them.
Right.
You know, so usage could go up a little bit, but there are positions like, you know, I'm gonna use substitutes. You know, they now start accumulating, it doesn't seem like a whole lot, um, event workers start to accumulate.
Really?
Correct, yeah, yeah, I mean.
All subs, all your subs, all your event workers.
Correct, and there are some others that didn't meet, you know, enough, like, we have a few cafeteria people that maybe had, were, you know, fifteen, twenty hours short. And so we're having to give them to meet the minimum requirement.
Gotcha.
Um, you know, and the same goes with like bus drivers, you know, we've given the three, um, days, whatever their days. But now they start accumulating E S S T, so there is new cost to it. And it's just like I say, um, just like unemployment, forty six thousand that we add, and again, we got money from the state to offset that. My guess is that'll over double next year, because the number of people that applied and qualified, there were a lot more that could have qualified, or they weren't summer program. So I mean, the reality, there's money that should cover next year, but ongoing, it could be a, I don't know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar, two hundred thousand dollar expense to the district as time goes on.
When I modeled the expense, when, um, we're talking unemployment now, when I modeled unemployment using two different state formulas, it's run up to two hundred thousand. And so once that state funding's done, you know, now that's in twenty five, once that's gone, that full weighted that's gonna come here. And, and that is really hard to kind of, so like with the Earn Sticking Safe Time, the later we hire somebody, they have to have eighty hours. So I think I backfilled forty five hours this week for somebody, they can take those dollars and quit.
So one piece.
They can take it before they've earned it?
You can't take it back because of how we've.
No, you can't, they can't take it before they earn, but there's, there's two methods, there's either accumulation, you know, so like our substitutes, they're accumulating. So when they get thirty hours, they get an hour of E S S T, para's in contract, for instance, they get their leave upfront, that's in contract. So it's a piece that's gonna have to be talked about as we go forward, like, if we were to hire a para now, technically, we upfront whatever their prorated leave is, and if it's less than eighty hours, they gotta get eighty hours. And so that becomes an issue, is there a way to put them, you know, anyone that's not here at the start of the year, to put them on the accumulation method? Because otherwise, you know, we do, we have people we lose, you know, all year, I mean, even, even like, take custodians, say you lost a custodian in May. It might prevent you from, we're not hiring until July one, because technically, if you hire them this year, they need those eighty hours. And you're right, they can't take away, because in that contract, we upfront all leave, you know, so they gotta get, well, you know. So it's, it's just, it's gonna take a year, but there's gonna be some cost.
Yeah.
Do not.
Hopefully not years, but it's hard, it's hard to gauge, because the world, and we're just, we're only, like, it was effective January, so we're really only seeing it. We're still needing it accrued, we're still trying to figure out how the system works, how to get it out there, um, and then, yeah, we'll see what the usage is, but, you know, stuff that works, thirty hours, we could teach ourselves, they're gonna get an hour of leave, and then.
Well, suddenly.
Yeah, you know, a hundred and forty dollars a day.
It doesn't seem like much, but there's also.
Hundred and forty dollars a day.
Yeah.
It adds up, because it's theory, it's, you know, you can add some. So some of those, um, and then the other thing that I've not shored up yet in the, um, budgets is the, um, change to, uh, in all the new programming. So, um, I'm not going through all the athletics, I'm short of what, all the new coaching, and all the new event workers, and what all that, that has not been, I've not, not sure.
We have the levy money we get to keep compared to what we would have paid.
I was gonna say, we get some from that too, right, yeah.
But it's gonna.
Right, it's about like offset.
Offset part, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Figure it out, so, um, we didn't wanna not, I didn't wanna not give you a number, but the number is, at this point, still not, um, not that close enough to say, okay, this is where we're going. Um, and then also, keep in mind, you know, what I think we always kind of try to talk about is, I don't, we always want to give you the fun balance, so that you can see, well, you can go, oh, well, we're getting more revenue, the, the reality is, is where's the revenue coming from, is it going to that on the sign, is it going to that restricted, and really, what does that mean? Is it really a net, you really get to spend it, or is it spoken for, and it's done? Um, and then twenty five, I did not roll, because I want twenty four, now delta below twenty five. But, um, so, we will give that to you just as soon as we can. Um, oh, the second sheet, and I think I skipped this one, I'm sorry.
Skipped the one that.
Yeah, I did, that's why I'm. Um, I did give you a revenue budget with prior year audit in. Um, this one is probably a little more significant in terms of what we're doing here with this one, is like giving you what your total revenue is before COVID. Because that's your baseline, so we throw out all that COVID money really where you at. Um, so then when you look at where we're at draft twenty four, if we ignore the COVID money, your revenue for twenty four is at thirteen million four hundred, your revenue for twenty five is at thirteen six. So that really is what you've got to work with, um, and right now, fourteen expense, if we said, well, all things held the same, and that fourteen one is the true expense budget, you can kind of go, well, you're four hundred dollars short.
Right.
And we haven't really rolled over an increase in picking out, but there's a lot of work to be done, okay? Um, questions, I'm sure Kevin will ask you if you've got questions, and then if there's things you need to see, I got a short time to take that point.
I usually throw the reminder, I forgot, remember twenty three, twenty four school year is fiscal twenty four? So the number that ends, so like on the sheet, fiscal twenty four, that's where we're at right now. We're gonna be working on the budget for the fiscal F Y twenty five, um, let's say.
So when you got the COVID money, I, I've kind of wondered this since I got on the board, it says that the COVID money is, is funding eleven point seven positions, I think it said, right? You didn't, we didn't hire that many people for COVID.
Some, some we did, we added.
Yeah, I know you added a few, but why are we funding eleven point seven positions?
What, what happened is we got, and and not just us, excessive, I don't, excessive is not the right word. We got a pot of money.
Yeah.
And you had to put in a plan of how are you gonna use.
Right.
You know, and so we were able to use some of that money, a good chunk of that money, to what we, we called, you know, keeping class size down. Some was adding, some was just, you know, otherwise, we would have been in the reduction mode, you know. Some was adding, some was just, you know, otherwise, we would have been in the reduction mode, you know, of cutting staff, because again, eighty percent of our cost is staff.
But how are most of those physicians funded before you got that money?
So some, some weren't here, some we've lost kids and haven't, you know, reduced things, and, I mean, that's the reality. That's why we were talking about the same thing last year, going, you know, that number, like I say, a couple, like, family interventionist positions were two years, they were hired that way. You know, again, it's not great to see them go, and it's horrible to see them go, but the reality is, that's grant funding. Even call it grant or whatever, but the, the rest has been, like I said, we added, I'd have to go back and look, three, four, to keep, you know, classes. The rest, we use that money instead of having to make reductions, you know, somewhat, because it's, it's, so like I say, it's, it's gonna be, well, we're short, we're, we can have conversation. And again, I don't want, you know, the, the sky is falling is not the right, we're in a better place than we were a year ago right now, because of the number of kids we got in and the crossubs. Those two things are major, you know, pluses. But on the other hand, it's gonna be where is everything else washed out? You know, a few of our contracts have settled, or a little more. It's not gonna be, you know, it's not a major. We had a number of budgets, as you're aware, and we have one yet to go, which will impact somewhat. But again, it's not, you know, it is where, where it is, and, and if you, I don't know, if you get M S B A, lose plugs at all or not, you'll see every day, there's an article somewhere about, you know, a district in a similar spot. We've used the money to hold on and not, you know, do some of the rightsizing, and I'm not saying that's.
The other one, I think, now, what we did, we do, well, we did most of stacking, but the other thing to keep in mind and out there too is, we went to one-to-one devices. And so we've kept in the fund balance, we started a technology set aside a few years ago. I think there's four hundred fifty thousand that we put, put, put that there, and committed it, knowing that when all this money was gone, you, we have a five-year cycle for like staff derivatives. But you also have one-to-one devices you didn't have pre-COVID. So, and they're, you know, you gotta replace them now. And you gotta keep up with all the software, and so we've, you know, kind of tucked.
Seventy-five thousand years set aside, so we're in a good spot there. But on the other hand, you know, it's easy to place to take seventy-five from. It's like not buying a bus, most usually you buy one bus. Once you start not doing that, and don't do it for twenty-three years, when all of a sudden you have to start again, now you're in a tough spot. Because where do you come up with a hundred and twenty thousand? So that was the idea of the set aside, so now, actually, I'm not sure if they're getting ordered this year, I think they're a year past already.
We extended it, we went six years without it.
And again, we might go another if they're still operating. You know, we've replaced the computer lab here, because they were starting to have issues. But we'll see where the staff are, the same with the Chromebooks, you know, coming out with their servers. But at least we're in a, I'm gonna say, comfortable spot, that we keep going with what we have, we're not gonna have to come up with, you know, two hundred thousand all of a sudden running here. So, I think that's something we can look at, but.
It's really nice to keep that technology going.
Correct.
Okay, that's really all I have. If you have questions or want to call it, let Kevin know, and we'll try to get, get a chance to go back.
Any questions right now? Like I say, I wouldn't spend a ton of time on, you know, I mean, we need kind of more of the whole picture before we can start having.
Uh, is there a? Is there, can I get a motion for a closed meeting for labor negotiations and planning pertaining to mediation with L four seven nine eight as allowed under M S thirteen D point zero three?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?